Good evening. It's six o'clock. And I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
We'll pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Denise, can I follow again? Could we call the first roll of the new year?
Schmuckel.
Yes.
McCumber.
Sorry, did you say McCumber? I couldn't hear you.
Yes, I did.
Yes, I'm here.
I don't think so.
Barshew.
I'm here.
Dool.
Here.
Agustinelli.
Here.
McManus.
Here.
Corn.
Here. All present and accounted for. First item on our agenda today is public comment. If any member of the public would care to address the board, you could come to the podium and be so kind as to give us your name and address for the record.
Is this their only opportunity for public comment tonight?
There'll be public comment at the end of the meeting as well.
Okay.
And if you could, the microphone so that...
It's my understanding that the Parks and Rec Commission is going to be presenting their annual report to you guys. And also on that will be the Commons natural area. So I think that's why a lot of us are here, to just show our support for that portion of the report and all the hard work that's been put into that. And just give a little bit of feedback on, you know, what we're interested in seeing as you guys develop that property. So this is the first meeting I've been to, so thanks for having us. I think probably that way for a lot of us, I know this is probably a minor issue in your guys' list of important things but really important to us, you know, we've grown up in this area and this is actually a really big deal for where we like to recreate. So I typed something up here. Feel free to cut me off if needed. And first off, thank you for taking the time to hear our input on the Commons property.
If I would, I'll tell you this, I misspoke. There is going to be a public hearing on that report, so there'll be another opportunity to speak directly in that.
Okay, beautiful. I'll hold off till then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Where is that? That's not on the agenda.
The annual report is under consent calendar, but we're having a public hearing on the master plan.
That's right.
Are you going to talk on the annual report or the master plan? Okay, yeah, there is a public hearing.
Yeah, it's seven A.
So is there anyone else who would care to make general public comment before we start the meeting? All right, then we'll close public comment and come back to board for review and approval of the agenda and statements of conflict. Any conflicts of interest?
I'll make a motion. We approve the amended agenda.
Support.
We have a motion and support to approve the amended agenda as presented. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, the same. Motion passes. The next item is the consent calendar.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with in one board motion without discussion. Any member of the board, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed therefrom and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single board action adopting the consent calendar. This evening, you have minutes, December 13th, 2022, regular board meeting, recommend approval. From the general fund, $199,588.11, recommend approval. MTT update, receive and file. Veterans exemptions report, receive and file. Building department, 2022, statement of operations and annual report, receive and file. Zoning department, 2022 activities, receive and file. And Parks and Recreation, 2022 annual report, receive and file.
Is there any member of the board who would like to remove anything from the consent calendar for discussion? Any member of the public who would like to remove anything from the consent calendar? Or staff?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the consent calendar as presented.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any questions or comments? A roll call vote, please.
Agustinelli.
Yes.
Schmuckel.
Yes.
Barshew.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Dool.
Yes.
Corn.
Yes. The next item is items removed from the consent calendar, and there are none. Correspondence, we have none. We'll move on to reports. Item A is the county commissioners' report.
Is this on?
Yep.
Good evening, everyone. Brad Jewett, Grand Charters County Board of Commissioners, District Four now instead of District Three. Just a few things to report here real quick. Let me pull this back up because my phone timed up. December 21st, 2022, our last meeting of the year there, we allocated our ARPA dollars and we did allocate a total of $685,000 to Garfield Township for a couple of the infrastructure projects. January 3rd, we had the swearing in of all the commissioners. We had five new commissioners this year join us, so we are now a commission of nine instead of a commission of seven. At our organizational meeting on January 4th, we did elect a chair, which is Commissioner Henshaw, and a vice chair, which is myself. And we also changed our start times for our meetings to 9:00 AM instead of 8:00 AM. Commissioner Flynn told me that she was going to try and make it tonight, but she got stuck at her work there and is going to be late if she does make it before the meeting's over. And then the last thing I have before I head to Blair tonight, I just wanted to say congratulations to Denise on her retirement from the county after 33 years and working with hundreds, if not thousands, of victims of the crimes and everything like that. She gets to finally enjoy her retirement, so I just wanted to say thank you for your service. You will greatly be missed, so.
Thank you, Brad. I appreciate that.
With that being said, does anybody have any questions or comments for me this evening?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, and like always, my contact information is on the county website. Feel free to reach out to me anytime, and we'll go from there. But I'm going to head to Blair tonight, so have a good night.
You too.
Thanks, Brad.
The next item is the sheriff's report.
Good evening. Brandon Brinkes, Lieutenant with Sheriff's Office. I'll go over the December stats first. And Garfield Township, we had 49 tickets issued last month, 15 injury crashes, 64 property damage crashes, 12 OWI arrests, and 44 criminal arrests. For the year, there were 659 citations issued. We had one fatal traffic crash in Garfield during 2022, 136 personal injury accidents, 868 property damage accidents. There were 107 drunk driving arrests and 640 criminal arrests in total, with 1,005 traffic crash totals. Last month, we had a few community police things with the holidays. Obviously, there wasn't a whole lot going on, but we had shop with a cop, a fraud awareness class that was done, an active shooter run hide fight class that was done for Sarah Lee. And then also, December 19th, Deputy Amanda Peck started as a community police officer for Garfield Township. She's been with us about five and a half years, and she's a negotiator for our emergency response team. And conversations with her, she's excited to be here. She's working with Brad, partnered up with him on our Team Two rotation. So she works Wednesday, Thursday, Fridays, and then every other Saturday and Sunday. And just has a finding that she has a passion for working with seniors and kids, and she wants to do some of the fraud awareness stuff and then come up with some other programs for maybe some driving things too. But those are things that we're working through to see where we can find to plug her in to be a benefit for the citizens of Garfield Township. So I think that's all I got. Any questions for me for this month?
You had another CPO assigned to the schools now?
Yep. Deputy McCowsky's working in the schools. He started, officially started, January 2nd, so last week. And he's already had a couple fairly large cases that have come up with some school threats and things that tied up a lot of his time where he was working with the schools, principals, and search warrants. And two of the cases I know took up several hours of time that he was able to take away from the other Garfield CPOs that are out taking calls. So it's been very beneficial already in the last week, so.
Is he primarily going to be assigned at the high school?
Both. He's split between the two, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
West Meadow Lane High School?
Yep.
Okay.
So he's got an office pretty well set up at West Senior High, but for the most part, he's 50/50 both places.
Perfect. Does he cover the elementary schools too, if should there be a need?
No, the other CPOs can help out with schools too. So we're not completely dumping all the school stuff on Mike. The high schools, so far, he's been super busy already. Just, and having him in there, they're already starting to bring stuff to him that they might not normally have reported or taken care of themselves. But, so yeah, the elementary schools and some of the other stuff, the other CPOs are still being involved in that too. So. Anything else?
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item C is the planning department report for January 2023.
Good evening. You have our report in your packet. I just wanted to kind of highlight a few things. One, at the meeting last month, the Planning Commission approved the K1 Speed Indoor Kart Racing Center for the former Sears building at Cherryland Center. Also this evening, you'll have later on your agenda is the Burmley Hills Site condominium, which the Planning Commission has provided with, in approved findings effect for that particular project. Also tomorrow evening is a conceptual review for a significant area in the township, and that's what is the Olson Foundation property, located west of US 31, north of Rennie School, south of Meadow Lane Drive. So it's roughly about 190 acres. So they're looking at a plan for that area conceptually to develop that into areas for commercial, for light industrial or business type of uses, as well as multifamily. So that's just a conceptual review, so it's a discussion. But I think, I just want to make sure that the board is aware of that because it is a significant area within our community. So that's about it, all I have. Questions or comments?
Any questions for John? Thank you, John. The next item is the Parks and Rec report.
Good evening. Sean Keogh, Garfield Township with the parks. Things have been fairly quiet in the parks for the most part with the limited work time with the holidays. Derek and I have kind of split our time between finishing up on some property maintenance inspections for the township, as well as getting into the parks. Just, you all have the reports, so I'll just highlight a couple of quick things. Silver Lake, we have just notified CPOs a couple of weeks, two, three weeks ago probably, there was a, I fear somebody tried to start a fire with toilet paper into the women's bathroom. That has not reoccurred since then. There was no damage to the bathroom or anything. It was all balled up on the tile floor there inside one of the stalls. So that's just something we're keeping an eye on. The Commons, just clearing down trees as we find them. There have been a couple of encampments that Derek has been working on the last week or so to try and figure out who they are, move them along, and take care of some of the trash that was left behind with that. We also had a garbage tote that was stolen from there, which, I don't know, that seems to be the one that likes to get stolen. That's the second or third time that one's been taken, but that's been since replaced by GFL. Boardman Valley, everything's good there, other than, like I said, the occasional tree clearing. And the beaver problem seems to be taken care of for now, so we will keep an eye on that. And Buffalo Ridge Trail, we did meet with Eco Seeds three or four weeks ago about getting, moving forward with some grant funding and so forth to plant an additional, probably 350 to 450 trees on the Garfield Township piece that's owned in there. A lot of that's owned by GDO Investments, which we know is Olson's. And we talked to, I talked to Brad Olson, and he kind of deterred us from planting anything on their property because that property is, you know, obviously under their ownership, and they don't, can't really see what involves in the future. They did say that the Y has kind of first dibs at it if they choose to sell at any point in the future. So, you know, with the money that was, will be involved potentially for the new tree purchase, we figured it's too much of a risk to, you know, spend a bunch of money on planting some nice trees and then having them bulldozed. So hopefully that doesn't happen. Hopefully it stays status quo and everybody can enjoy it. But that's where we're at with that right now, so. Any questions? Steve?
I wasn't able to get to Silver Lake and mow the sledding hills. When the snow hit, tractors, even four-wheel drive, are terrible on snow, specifically hills. So we'll have to hit it next year, unless we lose all of our snow, then I'll get over there, but.
Yeah, I, well, I mean, we haven't had much sledding season anyway, so.
But we have just enough snow where I, I know if I go down, I may not get out.
That was it, so.
I may have to call Joe McManus to bring his tractor to get me out of there.
There you go. Anything else? All right, thank you.
Item E is the clerk's report.
I've submitted the clerk's report in writing. If there are any questions. We're just preparing for the year end, getting the tax statements out for everyone, and getting ready for our audit, so. Fun times.
Read into election, from election season into audit.
Election season, read into audit season.
No breaks.
Keep on working.
Thank you.
No other questions for our clerk? Next item is the supervisor's report. You've heard the news on ARPA and the Cherryland redevelopment. I won't repeat that. We are considering, the Road Commission would like to do a presentation of where they've been the last few years and what their plans are for the next few years for the board. And we're talking about doing a joint PC town board meeting. So tentatively, we're looking at February 28th to have a joint study session, have the Road Commission present, and then cover any other topics that would be germane to both boards.
What time is that, please, sir?
Six o'clock.
That's at our regular board meeting, then?
Yep. I just wanted to give you a heads up on that.
Okay.
You know, John already explained that the Olsons have submitted a development plan for their big parcel. Just a reminder, April 17th through the 20th is the MTA Educational Conference at the resort. You can sign up for one, two, or three days. There's a lot of good classes, a lot of good things to get involved in there. So hope we'll see some fresh faces. And that wraps it up for the supervisor's report.
So I was just going to say the MTA, we'll make sure you get the agenda, what's out there. If you want to go, you just need to let me know, and I'll get you signed up.
Yeah, I would like to go, so if I could get the, yeah, now that I'm not working, so it's nice.
Looking for things to do?
No, I'm not, thank you.
Wants to expand her educational opportunities.
There we go. There we go.
Chris?
You said it started the 17th, and when does it end?
The 20th.
20th.
Okay. Laney, are you going to email those to us?
I'll email it out to you.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions? We'll move on to unfinished business. Item A is a public hearing on the consideration of Resolution 2023-01-T, a resolution adopting the Garfield Township 1023-2027 Parks and Rec Master Plan. That's actually 2023. At this point, we can open the public hearing, and anyone who cares to speak to the master plan, come on up to the podium. You know the drill.
I checked my address the first time, too, so I can get that right this time. Andrew Farron, I'm at New House, 4947 Buckhorn in your township here. So just grew up in Traverse City, and, you know, I typed up a bit to say here tonight. I'm going to try to pull some out because I know that you guys have a lot on your agenda, and I think there's others that may want to say a few things too. So try to keep it, keep it quick. But I did grow up, you know, right, you know, neighboring these trails. And 10 years old, I was out there on my mountain bike. It was probably the first time I rode on dirt, and I've been doing it ever since. You know, and really, I just wanted to get up here and explain, you know, how special that place is to not only me, but a lot of people within your community. And I know there's issues there that you guys have addressed, and I've been attending, I think, four now different meetings with the Park and Rec Committee. And, you know, they are very aware of what's going on there and what, you know, could be happening there with the right oversight, the right planning and execution. So really, I'm here to just show that, you know, there's a group of us, you know, right now, it's pretty unofficial. It's about 450 members of a Facebook community. But we do get together on group rides and really do stay in touch and pretty engaged. And we have been maintaining those trails, you know, and we've been doing our best to try to, you know, prevent the erosion and a lot of the things that you guys have recognized. I think we've done a fairly good job at it in a lot of areas. There definitely are some issue areas that, you know, it's been about 20 years of trail building and unorchestrated maintaining out there that have gotten us to where we are. But I think we've done a pretty good job of maintaining those trails over the years, clearing all the trees and removing a lot of the sand and some of those issues. And I just ask that you guys lean on us for help and guidance, and we know that property incredibly well. Parks and Rec Commission has actually created a subcommittee that I'll be a part of as well, a few others of us to help kind of convey some of our goals and suggestions, as well as, you know, the manpower and resources that come with that. So I'm really excited personally with the master plan. I think it's pretty high level. Specifically, like what I'd like to see, and I think a lot of people in this room, are the high, the high skill set, the technical mountain bike trails that are kind of currently back there. We'd like to modernize them, work alongside with you guys on that process, and make it something that is still unique to the area because there's a lot of mileage of existing trail elsewhere, and this is a very unique hub, and that's why you're going to find so much passion out there with the mountain bike community because there is nowhere else to ride like it. And we want to keep that, and I know there's risks involved. And I guess, let me just jump to my portion regarding that. I understand liability is a concern. I helped develop the bike park at Marquette Mountain and worked closely with the Quamanon Trail Network organization up there with similar concerns were often worked through. I want to assure you that the riders are fully aware of the risks associated with advanced mountain biking. For the landowners, there are many protections in place, such as the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act, which protects landowners against lawsuits related to recreation injuries if no money is exchanged. There are also very good ways of reducing these risks, such as directional trails, not having trails cross one another, and signage informing riders of gaps or drops as they approach features. Ride-arounds are already in place for these styles of features and should also be signed. You will find some of the signage already in place, hand painted on a piece of scrap wood done by many of the people in this room. And after speaking with Stephanie Musil, who's in this room, whose husband passed away on those trails, she has created an organization in his memorial, and we're hoping to get some funding from that memorial to help with short-term signage, to at least get us started out there during the time that the master plan gets implemented. You know, and I'd also like to extend the knowledge and sheer manpower of this group of riders to help select which trails are kept in place and help transition those deemed unsafe or unsustainable back to a more natural state, as mentioned in the master plan. The Parks and Rec Committee has asked a select few of us to join in on a subcommittee to help with this process, ensuring everyone is working together to meet the needs of all parties as much as possible. And I think that really sums it up, and I, you know, I want to jump back real quick to a note I have in here. Keep in mind that this isn't a very large piece of land, especially with the wide range of uses that it attracts. Five miles per hour is a fairly slow pace on a mountain bike. The proposed trail length is three and a half miles, meaning it would be less than a 45-minute ride for most of us. Compare that to the 20 miles at Palmer Woods and 16 miles at the Vasa, and this would not be much of a true attraction for the cross-country mountain biker. The users of this trail either live within a mile or two or they commute for the sole purpose of building technical skills as this style of riding is not available at other trail networks mentioned. This style of trail should be the focus as a specific design continues to develop. This is what keeps people like myself and the others in this room coming back week after week, year after year, for the thrill, the challenge, and the feeling you get when you leave your comfort zone even just for a moment to achieve something that you weren't able to do just a day before. So that just really sums up, I think, you know, our desire to try to maintain as much of what's there as possible, working with you guys to make sure it meets your needs and criteria, and also developing, you know, a high-level, challenging free ride zone is kind of what we've referred to it as, where it's directional downhill trails, a safe, separate uphill trail to get back to the top. And I did notice the plan had hubs in there, which means, you know, one trail starting point with multiple ways down. That was already in the master plan, and that's kind of the style that we agree with, where you can have different skill levels or areas that you can ride over and over again, and that's how you really progress as a rider. So keep up the good work. Thank you very much for having us today. And thanks, everyone who's been involved in that process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else care to speak? Yes, ma'am.
I apologize. Mine is a little long, but I would hope you understand the background into where I get into some of my comments. Good evening, everybody. My name is Dr. Stephanie Musil. I come from Farwell, which is about an hour and a half, an hour forty minutes from here. I am the wife of the late James Musil. Sorry, who passed away on the bike trails at the Commons this past fall. I wanted to make the trail, the trip up here to give my feedback on your master plan as I prepared this statement in response to the plan and some of the actions we saw after James's death. James and I have been best friends for 21 years and together for 17 years. But on October 15th, 2022, my life truly changed forever. A feared nightmare became a reality. My husband, James, took his last ride of his life at the Commons. The call I got that evening is one we had many discussions about. Discussions about him having a bad accident, discussions, the mountain biking could one day take his life and everything in between despite the protective gear he wore. James was at the Commons that day for a reason. I remember the joyfulness in his eyes, the smile on his face, and the overall pure excitement. He had to come to the Commons. He made the trip up with some of his friends to train for upcoming races, which would become his main driving focus over the last couple of years. He loved racing mountain bikes and pushing himself to accomplish new trails, jumps, and to accomplish technical difficulty that would make him into a better rider. He came to the mountain biking trails at the Commons to better himself, but instead, the trails took his life. I held his hand for many hours during which time I had to withdraw care on him. I held his hand as he took his last breath at Munson Hospital later that evening. I will spare you the injuries that he sustained, but what I can tell you is he did not feel any pain. His passion, his meaning of life is mountain biking, becoming the best of the best. But unfortunately, his passion ended up taking his life. For me, his wife, him dying, doing what he loved, offers a very small level of comfort. I don't know that much about mountain biking. I am all medicine, neurosurgery, trauma, and orthopedics. But I know James. I know he trained every day to improve his skills. He wanted to be a force to be reckoned with within the biking community. He pushed himself to train harder and never give up. He never let any obstacle stand in his way. He would ride the same trail, do the same jumps over and over again, until he was satisfied with his progress. This is what brought him here, the technical difficulty of some of the trails. This was a new challenge to him. He had the passion, the drive, the will, and so much more, as you could see in his eyes, the way he rode and the respect he had for all trails. This is why I'm asking you not to get rid of the more challenging trails. I'm even asking you to consider leaving the trail that took his life. I ask that you look to the biking community for their expertise and wisdom to help build and maintain the trails. To get rid of these advanced trails would do a disservice to all riders, whether they are To get rid of these advanced trails would do a disservice to all riders, whether they are beginners or experienced. And if James was here, he would ask for the same thing, to make the mountain biking trails at the Commons the best they can be. Trails where people can practice and improve their skill set on, just like him. They can push themselves to one day be the best of the best. Please allow the biking trails at the Commons to be wild, to be some of the best technical trails that Michigan has to offer. In closing, I would just like to say thank you for allowing us the opportunity and for the time and effort everyone has put towards making the best use of this incredible piece of property. And I am the president of the James Musel Memorial Foundation, which, as I said at his bedside, I only knew one way to make his legacy continue on in the biking community. And that was with the foundation. And as Andrew has pointed out, I am happy to donate money and raise funds to help with signage, just to help make the place a safer place for riders and for people to enjoy. James came to ride those trails. He did that jump and though that trailed twice that day and unfortunately, the second time it took his life. And I just want to say just thank you and thank you to everyone in the biking community and even the Sheriff's Department. Just thank you. Everyone has been incredibly wonderful to me. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Levi Kaiser, 2950 West Avenue, Interlock in Michigan. I want to thank Stephanie for all of her support of the trails and I happen to be on the trails on that day when James passed away. And I've spent countless hours up in those woods. Forty-four years old, I started riding up there as a teenager in junior high, middle school. First exposed to the property running cross-country in gym class. It was, they took us over there and man, most of the kids absolutely hated it. The trails are like this and, you know, kids were getting lost and it had a, there was a stigma to it back then, too. It was a spooky property. The institution had just been closed down or not too long and there's stories, you know. And yeah, kids, some kids would maybe run a little faster because of that. But I've spent a lot of my life up there and, you know, it was, you know, we've been through it before with injuries. People have been carted off the property before. It was the worst-case scenario, you know. Sometimes worst-case scenarios happen. And, you know, as Stephanie and Andrew said, people that ride trails like that, people that, you know, ride bikes at that level, we all understand the risk that we're taking. We never want something like that to happen. But I do want to thank everybody for, you know, the master plan and the time that's been put into that. I think it's an amazing plan and something that I've been like waiting for and like dreaming of my whole life to have, I mean, gosh, signage and like have people be able to find their way around the property and to have, you know, potentially have out-of-towners be able to experience it the same way, you know, somebody that knows the property does. But it's truly a unique property, hard to find geographical features like that anywhere close to here even. It's a special piece of land and it deserves a special consideration when making trails. I would love to also be part of that subcommittee that we've talked about as part of the Parks and Rec. And I just think that it is really important to include the core group of riders in this plan. And it's, we only get one opportunity to do it right. And I just, I have high hopes for the property. And it's a gem. It's something that, you know, future generations, you know, should learn to love and protect just like, you know, again, it's, I know it hasn't been easy to keep a chunk of property like that right in the center of town. So it's taken planning to this point and I just, I think it's gonna be amazing and I can't wait to see the potential maximize. And yeah, it's been a long time coming. I'm really excited for it and I just think we only get one chance to do it right and I want to see that happen. So, yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Sutherland Glen Harbor Township. And I bring my boy all over the country to do downhill mountain biking. And we go to public lands, we go to public parks across the country. And Colbrick pushes his bike up, run, and then he rides down 100 or 200-foot run of jumps, series of jumps. And then he pushes back up again and I go, because it looks, you know, pretty monotonous to me, but he can do that same run over and over and over again. Pushes bike up and ride a series of jumps down. And these are, we go to other public areas around the country. They have figured out the liability and I think we can here. I think we can figure out the signage, too, and bring something to our region that is not here in its moment. You know, Boyne Highlands has some on their private property, but then you gotta go up to the U.P. is the nearest thing. But Munising has it, Marquette has it, and Copper Harbor. So we're building this trail system. You guys can trust, you all can trust these people and your planning department to make it happen. And I'm sure this boy is happy to help in any way he can.
And I just have to say that there, you know, you guys have all seen them out there, but there are 50 to 100 other teenagers that are into this. And I can't think of a better use of time. There's just something about a kid playing in the woods.
It's rare. Is there anyone else who would like to give a public comment?
My name is Tabitha Lee. I live at 120 East 16th in Traverse City. I love mountain biking. I love the Commons. I've been lucky enough to actually race with James and he was a hell of a rider. And I've also traveled around and I think my biggest thing that I want to say when looking at that master plan and just looking at what we have right now is Traverse City feels very polarized to me. We prioritize cross-country trails. We have so much of that, miles and miles, beautiful trails. And we have really nothing for downhill, enduro, technical trails. And I think that's part of why we're in the situation we have right now where they're deemed very dangerous and we have issues and accidents because we're not prioritizing that at all. And I think in addition to that master plan, I would really like to see just more consideration for different types of riding outside of cross-country riding. So building pump tracks and skills courses that toddlers can go on and take their strider bikes. If we set up a framework for more technical riding, we're not going to have as many accidents. You're not going to have as much liability. And we've seen it. We have traveled around to Bentonville and towns that have made themselves a mountain bike destination. And I will see toddlers hitting four-foot drops because they've built this framework and they'll do it in a flat piece of land. They'll build a tiny pump track and little skinny courses. I mean, it doesn't take a lot to start building in skills that we really don't have here. And we have like, it's starting at the Vasa. We have like the skills course there, but it's very small. It's not very challenging and it's very hard to go from that to jumps and drops and features at the Commons like we have. And I think if, in addition to making those trails a little bit better, a little bit more modern, having these courses all over where people can go is really going to bridge that gap between straight cross-country riding and then more technical riding, which people want. And like right now, we have to travel for it. And I'd rather not travel. I love Traverse City. I love riding all types of courses, but I find myself going to Copper Harbor in Bentonville every single year when really, we have like beautiful trails here that we could really develop. So I think I love the master plan, but I'd also like to see other areas where we're putting in, like I said, pump tracks, skills courses, little skinnies, and have them really accessible so we can train people to be safer on a bike and to keep progressing with their skills. So I think that's kind of all I have to say on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Andy Hyde. I live at 1004 Lincoln Street, right in Traverse City. I also own a business in Traverse City and I'm a mountain biker. And I would just like to really briefly point out that I think all of us here have traveled somewhere else to ride bikes and spent a pretty fair amount of money doing it. And it's also, I think, would be a really great opportunity to bring other people to Traverse City who are willing to spend money at local businesses, hotels, restaurants, everything like that. So please consider a dedicated one-way mountain bike trail up at the Commons.
My name is Leland Kaiser.
I'm sorry, we can't hear you, honey.
Pull down the.
Hold the mic down, Roger.
There you go.
My name is Leland Kaiser. I have had lots of fun at the Commons. I've walked up and down those hills hundreds of times. It is my favorite place to ride. And last fall, my favorite trails were torn out. I want, I just want to say that challenging trails are what I want to ride.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I am Adrian Maylie. I live at 4195 Holiday Road up in Holiday Hills. Like a lot of the other riders, I've grown up in Traverse City. Spent tons of hours up at the hills at State Hospital, which, to someone's point, glad that hasn't been developed into a subdivision or something. So thank you for keeping it a park at this point. As others have stated, there's definitely a need and a want for more technical trails around here. I helped out this spring reviving a bike night at Mount Holiday, which is a gravity fad. We took the trucks up that they use for the zipliners, sit on the way up, ride on the way down. And we had a couple nights where we had almost 40 people out there. So there's definitely a need and a want for more fun, challenging trails other than cross-country or a flow trail like Palmer Woods. And as others have stated, there is the liability issue, but other places have figured it out. So while it might not be the easiest thing to do, I think it definitely is warranted and worth consideration of keeping some more of the harder technical trails. And I don't know how much lingo of mountain biking you guys know, but as Andrew had stated, all of those have ride arounds, meaning if there is a jump or a drop or something that's hard and challenging, there's an easy trail right to the side where you can just ride around, harm no foul, really easy. So there is an option up there of keeping technical riding while making it accessible and progressive for newer riders. So thanks for the consideration.
Evening. Peter Trucco with Wildcard Cycle Works at 436 West Front Street. You have a great opportunity right in Traverse City to create an environment that will live many lifetimes. You have an awesome setup with Hickory. Been here 20 years, raised my kids on that hill. They've turned into great little skiers. You have a great opportunity to help children turn into great little riders. And as far as education, you know, building something like this will only benefit kids in the future. It'll benefit riders today. Education is an important part of mountain biking and we as a shop try to do that from the first moment that somebody comes in and buys a bike. So what you're building here is, has a lot of opportunity to turn mediocre riders into great riders and to build a passion right here in downtown Traverse City, which is really unlike any other area in the U.S. So well done for pursuing this and developing it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else for public comment? At this point, we will close public comment and bring it back to the board for discussion.
Can I say something?
Please.
As a representative for the Parks and Rec, we decided upon the other night at our meeting that we should have a subcommittee because a lot of the people on the actual Parks and Rec's committee, commission, don't know about mountain biking. Chris Remy does. So what we have decided at that point in time is to have a subcommittee with Chris Remy. I know Andrew is on it and a couple other gentlemen are on it. So that's what we had decided at that point in time, to have them come back to us as far as the mountain bike trail goes. So that's what they were talking about with a subcommittee.
Steve?
The connector from the Commons to Hickory, that's not there yet, right, John? The trail connector?
Correct. It's a goal to have that connection, but it's not in place or planned, at least.
So from the Joint Rec Authority's position, I'm on that committee. The Hickory Forest is very near to being purchased and that's the west side of Hickory Hills. It's gonna have passive biking through it to obtain the trails in Hickory Hills. So my thought is if that connection can allow people and bikes to connect between the two, that's gonna be a huge link. I don't know that the forest is gonna have biking in it so much as passive just to get through it because of the plant and vegetation species in there that are kind of rare. But that'd be kind of cool to link all that because that would extend the fingers of people getting to the Commons by a trail. So that's just an update from Joint Rec.
Chris?
I just want to say I appreciate everybody being here to speak on this. It's obviously very important to them. And then for the fact that you guys added a subcommittee to educate you on a topic that you're not an expert at. So I think, you know, having that community collaboration for you to collect information, to help us make decisions to build this the way that they want it to be built with safety in mind and liability because that's what we do in government is to protect people. But it sounds like they're able to do it in a safe way with these, you know, ways to get around big jumps and I think signage will take care of it. And the more that you bring to people's attention, that it can be dangerous. And, you know, if you proceed, you know, you could be harmed. I think the signage just make everybody aware and then have the community involvement, I think is huge. So. And I like the idea, you know, a lot of times we're thinking about connecting trails to different areas of the township, you know, paved paths and whatnot to get from point A to point B. And to be able to focus on something that's unique to the area and then have experts input. Great idea.
Thanks.
Nali?
Just a question. So our Parks and Rec, are you guys talking about a section of this land or all of this land?
No, this is just actually, well, John can probably answer the question better, too. This is just part of the master plan that we, they want to see that it's in that master plan.
Yeah, so what you're considering tonight is the overall Parks and Rec master plan. And then with that is kind of the sub-plan or the plan for the Commons natural area. Within that, there's specifically the area kind of what was acquired a few years ago by the township is the state 40.
That 40 acres.
General area towards the back where there's more topography and that type of thing that's conducive for biking. So that's kind of where that focuses. But that's in more detail in that the mass, the plan for the park, which is actually an appendix to this overall plan.
Thanks.
Steve?
So just a general question, John. In here. So just a general question. John, in here, and I didn't see it, when the public was polled and surveyed for items they'd like to see in the parks, was ice skating one of those items?
I don't know. I'd have to check on that to look back and when we did. So there was a survey that was done back in 2021, and I don't know if that was.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Yeah, I think it was in there, John. I know we had talked about it at the Parks and Rec Commission at one point in time, that that was also a consideration.
There is always oper, you know, open-ended questions that allow people to make those recommendations. And I don't recall that at the time if that kind of was identified.
Yeah. I know our park, you know, I'm thinking Silver Lake Park only because it's probably the most developed park we have, but, and it closes at dark, and we do have problems after dark, but maybe those problems are because there might not be people there. And I've always envisioned Silver Lake Park having an ice skating rink, that we freeze the cement, have it covered under a building, and then when we thaw it out in the springtime, it drains and it becomes a picnic pavilion, and then have lights underneath there and kind of create the ambiance for people to be able to go there and ice skate. And then I had mentioned to the boys when we were looking at mowing the sledding hills, I said it'd be kind of cool to run some six-by-six poles down the sides of those and put some LED lights in there and light up the sledding trails to get people to come and enjoy those, because there's no place like that in our area that I'm aware of that's free. I think you have to pay for it if you go somewhere. But the benefit, I think, of it is it brings more people into our park, more people into our community, and possibly more economic impact for the businesses around, because if you're going to go there and sled and that, you're going to probably get thirsty and hungry, and you'll end up eating at restaurants. But it would have to be a Parks Commission thing to maybe allow the park to be open till, you know, dark in the summers, 10:00, and in the winter, maybe we allow it to be open till 9:00. But maybe that people being there keeps the hindering of fire starters and vandalism down. But it would create an ambiance that's kind of cool, that's not offered nowhere. And if we put the ice skating rink, I proposed this many years ago, you know, if we put it under a picnic pavilion roof and put sides on it with padded tops and come up with a schedule of these hours are for hockey guys and these hours are for free skaters, and then when spring gets here, we shut the glycol pump machine off and pull the sidewalls and let her melt and drain away, and we got a picnic pavilion. So just thoughts. That's why I wondered, I asked about the ice skating. I know it was in, a while ago, but I didn't know if it had been another survey that it came up again.
Yeah, I didn't, you know, just looking at this, I don't see that was kind of raised as an item, as, but, you know, it could be studied for future, though, as well.
But all in all, this is a awesome master plan for our parks. We've got a lot of parks. When you start looking at the pictures in there, holy cow. We have a lot of land that's parks, developed and undeveloped.
Just need a motion?
I would entertain a motion.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that Resolution 2023-01-T, attached to Planning Department Report 2023-4, adopting the Charter Township of Garfield, 2023-2027, Parks and Recreation Master Plan be adopted.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Barshew, and second by Ms. Schmuckel. Any questions or comments? Okay. A roll call vote, please.
Barshew?
Yes.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Duel?
Yes.
Agustinelli?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes. That's unanimous. Thank you. Next item under unfinished business is consideration of Resolution 2023-02-T, a resolution adapting Ordinance 77, Transitional Housing Facilities. Good to see you, Bob.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks for coming, especially the young guys.
Appreciate it.
Sorry. All right.
Can you hear me through here?
Yeah. Loud and clear.
All right, cool. Okay, well, I'm back again to bring this ordinance to you with some changes. I trust you've read the ordinance with the markups on it.
Give it just one quick minute.
Yeah.
They're talking on the way out, so.
Thanks, Mike. There you go.
Okay. So anyways, yeah, so you should have the ordinance as marked up here. This shows all the changes from when the ordinance was originally presented to you in, in the public hearing, and as it was introduced. So I did want to just briefly explain what those changes are, just so you understand where, where I was hoping to go with this, and, and also based on your input, too, but based on some of what I was reading in our other licensing ordinances that we have. We get in a discussion about police, police department involvement, fire department, and other agencies. And in looking at our other ordinances, I noticed that we didn't have any of that language in there directly involving those other agencies. So what I did is I eliminated those three sections, Section 13, 14, and 15, and in place under Section 16, which would become 13. It talks more in general about inspections and reports from other agencies and departments. So we're still, we're not eliminating the involvement, we're just not implicitly involving them in this process. So I, I hope that, that's something you're okay with. If it's not, then I can go back to the drawing board again and put something else together, or put the language back the way it is. So, so that's basically what you have before you. If you have any questions, I can entertain those. I can explain a little more the ordinance again, if you need a little refresher on that.
I'm pretty comfortable with the changes, the questions that were asked last time reflected some of the reticence of the Sheriff's Department to, to enter into the areas that typically they don't.
Right.
And I, going forward, if it, if we find it's lacking, we can obviously amend the ordinance. But I'd like to have something in place at this point so we can get started with it.
Yep, I agree.
Mike, just a couple questions. So who checks to, for the renewal compliance? Is it you, the building inspection zoning?
Well, it could be any one of us. We set it up to where the clerk is the head over the, the ordinance, because it's a licensing ordinance. But she can designate, or the clerk can designate, any one of us to oversee the process. Or we can collaboratively work on it together.
But before they're issued a renewal, they, they have to be compliant. Is that what I'm, what I read in here?
Yes, that's correct.
And then that renewal inspection is covered through the renewal fee?
Yes.
Okay. And then the last question is, if most of them, how do I say this, are considered commercial, they're on an annual fire inspection, so I would assume Metro would be doing their annual inspections on these to make sure they're compliant with fire escapes and fire extinguishers and all that. And that's not us, that's going to be them?
Correct, correct.
Okay, all right.
We, we can collect that information from them to verify that they've done their inspections and make sure that they pass those inspections.
Yeah, maybe if they're aware, Chuck, of the transitional housing approvals that we have, maybe when they inspect those, they could just drop a note to Mike or whoever's going to get it to just say they've been inspected and they're compliant. We can just keep a check of it.
Right.
Just so they don't barricade doors or have 10-year-old fire extinguishers or something's not working.
Three extension cords connected to each other.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
You know, so, yeah, okay. Yeah, it sounds good.
Yeah, if I may add, too, I anticipate, at least, it's not written in the ordinance specifics on how we go about our business with this, but I would anticipate before we issue a license, we would check with the agencies that we're wanting to hear from, like the Fire Department, Police Department, Sheriff's Department, and any other agencies that we think have involvement here. So, so, you know, we would, we would do our best to make sure that they're, they're comfortable with it, continuing the license.
Want a motion?
Absolutely.
I'll make a motion that Resolution 2023-02-T to establish Ordinance Number 77, an ordinance to license transitional housing facilities be adopted.
Support.
We have a motion and support to adopt the transitional housing facilities licensing. Are there any questions or comments? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Duel?
Yes.
Was it Barshew who seconded?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Agustinelli?
Yes.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes. And that is unanimous.
There you go, Mike.
Thank you.
Good work.
Yep, as long as you're standing there, let's talk about C.
Right.
Resolution 2023-3-T, a resolution updating the existing fee schedule.
Yes. So you should have attachment with the resolution in this updated fee schedule chart. The only two changes are the initial fee, application fee, and the annual renewal license fee, which I believe we talked about that last time, and it seemed like everyone was comfortable with these numbers. So if there's any additional thoughts.
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 23, 2023-3-T, a revised fee schedule covering various planning, zoning, land use, mapping, and licensing fees.
Support.
We have a motion by Schmuckel, and support by Molly. Any questions or comments? A roll call vote, please.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Agustinelli?
Yes.
Barshew?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Duel?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes. Motion passes.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
We move on to new business. Item A is consideration of application SPR 2022-16 for Burmley Hills Site Condominium Development. John?
Yes. What you have in front of you this evening is a proposal for a site condominium. It's a 35-lot residential site condominium that's actually akin to the Burmley Hills Estate Subdivision, which is, was established back in the late 80s with the idea that there would be a couple additional phases. This is looking at the south end, so it was basically building out what was intended to happen 30-some years ago. So this is, quite honestly, I've been at the township here for over four and a half years, and this is our first single-family residential development. We approved another one, but it has since lapsed. So it's good to see some single-family homes coming our way. And so this is a process that went through the Planning Commission. They did an introduction back in October, held a public hearing in November. Did hear some comments and conversations from the, mainly the residents of the current Burmley Hills Estate Subdivision that kind of comes off of Burmley Road. Most of those issues are things to be addressed with the Road Commission, such as the condition of their roads, as well as the stop signs. So that's probably important for them to have those conversations continuing with the Road Commission. In terms of the actual proposal, the Planning Commission did adopt a findings of fact for the project at its, at their December meeting, so basically recommending approval. Met all the standards in the zoning ordinance and requirements for this type of development being presented for your consideration this evening.
And a motion?
Unless, well, you can make the motion.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that the finding of fact for application SPR 2022-16 submitted by TNR Investments for a site condominium at parcel 05-026-020-30, as presented in Planning Department Report 2023-5, and is recommended for adoption by the Planning Commission be adopted.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Are there any questions or comments? Steve?
So, John, I know we've always tried to connect with other adjoining ones, but I see, from what I'm telling these drawings, the one to the south, Shale and Crest have turnarounds, roundabouts, or whatever you want to call those at the end of them, stubs. But they're not, they're not linking stubs, so we're not linking to the development to the south. But we do have a stub heading to the west for a future attachment to something there. Is that true?
That's correct. So it's, the, the development to the south is really not set up to have a connection, and it was really never anticipated that there would be. But you're correct, our standards require that there be, when there's land that's adjacent to this that is not previously platted or, you know, subdivided in a way that is formalized like a site, another site condominium, that they require to provide a stub. So that is there, what the anticipation should be. Because that area to the west of there is, it's not, I believe it's currently zoned agriculture, but it is planned for additional single-family R1, typical type of single-family development.
Okay. So the one to the south was before we decided interconnecting, and there was no stub leg put on it. So, okay. And I think it's really cool. Is that a basketball court in the one turnaround?
Looks like a half-court.
Or a half-court. I'm looking at that going, that's kind of neat to use that that way. Thank you.
Yes.
There's a second motion I got to make, too. When you're ready. Are you ready?
Do we have any other questions or comments?
Do we have to vote on this?
Do we have any questions or comments on the findings?
I'm getting ahead of myself.
I was going to say, we have to vote on one first.
He's got to eat dinner.
Are there any other questions or comments on the findings of fact? Then, could we have a roll call vote?
Certainly. Barshew?
Yes.
Agustinelli?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Duel?
Yes.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes. Now, make another motion.
I'm going to kind of abbreviate this, so I don't have to read all that, and tell me if you feel like I need to after I make it. I'd like to make a motion that the application SPR 2022-16, submitted by TNR Investments for a site condominium at parcel 05-026-020-30, be approved subject to the following conditions identified in bullet points number one through number seven.
If you wish, you can say "as presented."
As presented is good? Okay, as presented on page six of the.
That way we are adopting the written language.
Support.
Okay.
We have a motion and support to adopt the resolution. Any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Barshew?
Yes.
Duel?
Yes.
Agustinelli?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Did you get everybody?
I think you did.
You did.
And it's unanimous. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. Did you bring some sun with you?
The last action item on our agenda today is consideration of submitting Ordinance 78, the Soil Erosion Sedimentation Control to Eagle DEQ.
Hello again. So, yeah, just, you have a packet, I'm presuming, so I won't spend too much time rehashing what's in here. So basically, we're just asking for your support and comments on whether to forward this to the DEQ or Eagle now for review. And I've provided the DEQ publication, How to Change an Agency Designated as a CEA/MEA, just so you see the overall process that we have to go through. So we've had this ordinance in place. We had it written. We had it reviewed by Scott Howard. He gave a favorable view of it. And now I'm just bringing it back to you for your review and comments. I did highlight in the report that it does differ from the county's ordinance. I think that's the most important thing for me to make sure that, that you would understand, and, and definitely weigh in on if you don't agree with this. But the county ordinance is a lot more strict than what this would be. This would mirror what the state requires us to regulate. I did look at a lot of other ordinances, other townships, even a couple cities that do have the municipal designation. Almost all of them only regulate as the state regulates. The Grant Travers County is one of the very few, if not the only one that I could find that has the extra regulations. And my understanding is it has more to do with the issues they had with the state, and some protections the state and the county agreed to add to their ordinance. So I So I did talk to Jacob Riley from Eagle, who administers the program. He assured us that we do not have to have all the county's extra requirements in there, so, so I just wanted to make you aware of that. Other than that, I'll leave it open to questions if you have any.
I just have one comment, and that is that while the county has a stricter ordinance, they don't enforce it. So-
What's the use of having it?
Yeah, what's the use of having it?
Right.
We want, we want, we want to have an ordinance that we can enforce uniformly across the board. Remember I said Dan was, when he was on the board, that the property behind Sam's Club had that, created that hill, and soil erosion, it's fine. It's just fine.
The landscaping one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So Chuck, this goes passing from our board, then it gets turned into the state, and then if the state approves it, then we submitted a letter to Grand Travers County saying we're pulling from them? Or don't we need to do that?
We do, and, and we have to, at that point, we will have to have a public hearing in order to establish a new ordinance. But there's, assuming that they have no changes.
And then I made two more notes, if I can ask them. Have you come up with any fees yet, Mike?
I am working on the fee schedule. I have pulled fees, fees from a lot of other communities once again. They're mostly in the ballpark with what the county has, so I was thinking we would probably present something similar to what their fee schedule is.
Yeah, because even a waiver, I just got a waiver on a project, we're putting in some window wells, and it was twenty-five bucks for them to waive it.
I might-
And it takes time, so it should cost something, I mean-
Right, right. Well, that's a good, that's a good point. We actually had a conversation, I think in a manager's meeting, and I don't know, we could, we could charge the waiver fee, although in a lot of cases, it's pretty easy to determine whether a permit is required, especially if we're just looking at property size and distance to the waterfront, so that's something we can figure out in about five minutes, so if you want us to charge twenty-five, we can, but I don't think it's necessary.
And then one more question I had written down. You had the listings of, you know, I got to put my glasses on, sorry, located within water, slopes of twenty percent, five hundred feet from the county drain, disturbing soils on site, category, or group D. What about disturbing, and I read it in here about pulling stumps and that stuff, but what if they disturb areas bigger than a certain size exempt agricultural, because they plow and disc acres? But I thought there was, doesn't the county have something that if you disturb areas over a certain size, you have to have it reviewed, too? Like if you're changing a hill slope, or mining, or-
Right.
Something along that line? I'm wondering if we shouldn't have something in there, run it past Howard, of maybe reviewing it for, I'm going to, I don't know, just a certain size area that's disturbed, that's not permitted for a build?
Right.
Are you talking about farming?
No, I'm talking about, like, somebody wants to put in a pole barn, and they have to level a huge area, or they don't want a hill on their property, they want it gone, so they wipe it out, and it could create an issue to a neighbor by doing that, or they change their landscaping and create a drainage issue onto a neighbor, which creates a problem. You know, you get, I think we just recently, didn't we just get something under correspondence last summer about somebody did something on their land, and it caused the neighbor to get flooded out during the storms?
Wow, that was a lot.
But I'm just thinking, I don't know if-
That was, the county's ordinance covered that, but they never-
Yeah. But I just, I just throwing it out there, I'm not saying they need, but I'm just wondering if we need to look at earth movement that's not really for construction purposes? Which covers mining, and changing hills, and changing slopes, and creating drainage, that you don't create a problem for your neighbor?
Right. Well, this would cover any earth change. It's not, doesn't have to be related to a construction activity.
Does it have a size? Is it, or is it just any earth change?
Yeah, any earth change over one acre in size requires a-
Oh, that is in here. I must not have seen that.
Yeah, yeah, I apologize if that wasn't clear. The state prescribes anything over an acre, or any earth change within five hundred feet of a water body, a state water body.
Or stream.
Or stream, yeah. Stream, river, lakes.
County drainage, isn't it? Something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was a federal.
I think it's great. I'm glad we're pulling it in-house, honestly, because I just went through that, and I'm glad we're not doing that electronic thing. That was a royal pain to submit, for I knew what was coming as a waiver, because it kicked me out three times. I had to go back in and put it in three different times. It was terrible. You couldn't attach your drawings or nothing, and then finally, on the fourth attempt, it went in. And then I mentioned it to the gal, and she said, "That's not the only issue we're having." I'm like, wow, I'm so glad we didn't do that.
The Board of Public Works canceled two meetings last month, and one already this month, because the software that the county uses to prepare the agendas is malfunctioning.
Oh, God.
Were you referring to Intergov? Remember we talked about that a year ago?
Yeah, it's, we have to go, not here, I can bring it in and submit it.
We have, we have, we have signed up for the observation-only part.
Yeah. But it's terrible. Yeah. It's terrible.
We got a chance to test drive before we bought it, so.
I would turn the car back in and not buy it if it was me.
It's a test drive.
Yeah, yeah.
There's one thing I did want to make sure, if I didn't point it out or make it clear enough in the report, too, is even if we don't adopt the extra permit requirements, any activity by the state law, not just by our ordinance, has to meet proper soil erosion control, so whether they need to permit or not is, is really irrelevant. They still have to maintain their property within the law, within our ordinances, so there's a lot of-
Still fences, vegetation established, all the normal-
Correct.
Processes.
Yeah. And Mike, you're educated in that, right? If I remember right?
Right. I, I, I'm actually working on recertifying for the comprehensive. I have the, I did have the comprehensive for many years, so I'm working to recertify on that. I have the construction, or I have the inspector's certification, so that's the prerequisite to get in the comprehensive, and we also have Rich Carl that's currently registered as well. We're going to make sure they get re-registered. Derek and Sean, we want to get them registered as inspectors as well, and maybe even Jamie Douglas, our office person, get her into the comprehensive, so her and I can kind of share those duties, and-
Nice.
Yeah, so we have a plan for that as well.
If there are no other questions, we're looking for-
I make a motion that we authorize submission of proposal Garfield Township Ordinance Number Seventy-eight as attached to this report to the state of Michigan for review and approval.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same? That's unanimous. Thank you. We're back to public comment.
Are you public out there?
I see an officer, a zoning administrator, a Parks guy.
Any other business to come before the board today?
I just want to say that I went to the Metro Board orientation, and it was awesome. I mean, I ended up asking a ton of questions, and they said it was ninety minutes, and I was there almost two and a half hours, but it was really, really good. It was very, very informative.
Molly?
I have two things. One, we talked about, there's a difference in classification for residential between zoning and the building department. Should we be making those things, those definitions be the same, or close to it, or what's the, what's the reason? When we looked, I looked at the report, both of them mentioned that it's different, and maybe Mike wants to talk about that, I don't know, he's shaking his head, so. It's confusing, and maybe we want to-
Yeah, yeah, I think the best way to answer that question is to say that the zoning classifications, the ordinance itself has different use classifications than the building code, so that's why we kind of tried to stay within the realm of the ordinance or, or code we were dealing with, so, yeah, Carl and I have had this conversation probably every year since we've been writing reports, so we're always anticipating this question coming up, so that's why we both put that little blurb in our report, so. I can talk to Carl, see if there's a way, maybe we can, you know, make it look the same on there, or put some kind of subset in there, I don't know. I mean, we can try to figure out a way to make it make better sense to you.
Yeah, everybody should be talking on the same page, so.
Yeah.
I think if you can, if you can do it, and it doesn't cause a problem, maybe you want to do that.
Sure.
Another fun project for you.
I just, I got it.
We have a year to work on it, so it's all good.
Okay, then there's one other thing, and that's, it's always been my understanding that you cannot charge building fees higher than what it costs you to do the work. We brought in four-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand and some change in permit fees, but when we look at our, our building department, our costs show it's a hundred-and-forty-thousand. I know it's more than that, because we don't put, like Jennifer, into the building department. You know, we don't charge in that cost center the same way. I don't know if we're creating a problem for ourselves.
The other, the other things that don't show up on there that don't go into our budget are depreciation of the building. I mean, a part of this building is that department.
Okay. But there's, that's pretty big.
Depreciation on the vehicles, heating costs, electrical costs, insurance costs. I mean, a portion of all of these expenses would be reflected in each department if you wanted to, you know, break it down that way. And I think somewhere there is a-
Well, we do have to, to come into compliance with the new state requirements for our budgets, and so Buddy and I are going to be working with BSNA. So each department, you'll have actually what we pay for insurance for each department, their health insurance and that type of thing. So those will be all into each of those cost centers. We're going to go for what we approved, but it's going to all, same numbers, but it's might be in a different format, so we have to work on that, have it done by the end of the year. So there'll be a little more, you'll see more on there.
I think, yeah. I don't want us to get in trouble with the state, because you got one rule over here, but then if you look at it-
And we have the lowest fees in the state.
Yeah. Well, I'm not saying we don't, but we got to show that-
That's what Carl has checked on, and he's like, yeah, we're not raising, we haven't raised them in how many years? I don't remember.
We got to show that that's what it costs.
Right.
If you got a way to do that, that's-
Yeah, if you, if you fold in everything that, if they were to put up their own building and heat it, and insure it, and everything else, it would be-
I'm not saying-
It'd be a losing operation.
Yeah, I'm not saying we're high.
Yeah, no. Chris?
Is there any reason that we should not be starting our audit of fire services being delivered in the township? Is it too early? Should we wait a little bit longer?
I want, I've got two potential firms that I want to talk to, and I'd like to find a third, at least.
I've got a list of three right now.
Have you?
Reported to me to be reputable. So I compare them to what you have, and-
Okay.
Go from there. But I know they take, these things can take a long time, and I don't want us to be, like, having to make a decision and know we don't have the information yet.
Right.
So.
The sooner the better.
Right now, if we made the decision today, it wouldn't take effect until the end of twenty-twenty-four.
Based on the board's decision.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it, it's a full calendar year.
Yeah, I understand that. I just want to see the numbers before I make that decision.
Correct.
Accurate numbers.
Yeah. Which we will have.
And I, I think you, it's, one of the things I've observed in fourteen years is that some organizations go out and hire consultants that will give them the decision they want.
Yeah.
There are firms out there that will-
Oh, absolutely.
That will-
Help your agenda.
Yep.
Absolutely.
And that's not what we're looking for.
No.
Looking for a-
No, the real.
Unbiased, real opinion.
An unbiased, honest approach.
Absolutely.
So we understand where we're going.
Yeah, because if they come in and say it's three, and then it ends up being five, we have to answer to the public. And that's not good.
I don't have to, I'm going to be gone.
Well, whatever. One thing, Chloe and I were talking, I'm going to include her a little bit in this. When we have committees that have board members on them, we were mentioning it'd be nice to have them present their meetings here and update.
Sure.
So one of them I would like to add is Joint Rec Authority, because that's a huge piece of Garfield Township, and to get us up on where we're at with that, and what's going on at Joint Rec, and Hickory Forest, and the connections into Hickory Hills, and the lighting, and the buildings, and the buildings they're going to be finishing off and renting space, so. I don't remember all of it that's been going on. Those are some basic kicking points, but I think it'd be kind of nice for any committee that has a board member on it, that has a way to the township board, should present. And I know Metro's presented by chief in that stuff, but maybe Chris and Chuck and you two can queue in more that he might not touch on.
Yeah.
You know, and I just think it was a great idea. We just talked about it.
I think it's a good idea to have a summary from a board member of, and for you guys to get the perspective to bring back to the Fire Board how our board stands on certain things, or on the Joint Rec, you know, you could bring issues to our whole board, so that when you go to those boards you are representing-
What?
Our whole board wants. So I thought it'd be good to have, like, a report by the person on the Fire Board, and a report by the person on the Joint Rec Board, and Planning Commission Molly kind of fills in every once in a while, too, but I just think that would be nice.
It seems like when we have, like, personnel committee, I'm sorry.
No, sorry, you go ahead.
Like, when we have personnel committee topics, like, we're looking to hire somebody, we always did a report.
Right, well typically, if we're, we're asking the board for action at that point, so we-
Then do your report, then.
And we have our discussion to give.
Yeah.
And a recommendation. So that's, that kind of happens naturally. As I said, some of the other ones tend to be long-term, and the Joint Rec Authority, I think, you know, if, once a quarter at least, you know, maybe kind of just put it on the agenda under reports, and-
Yeah, that's like with Parks and Rec, too, though. John doesn't, I, I had on, or he's not there at the meeting, and that's why I brought up tonight about that subcommittee that we had decided upon.
Well, maybe, maybe when we have reports, just have Commissioner report, and then if you've got something really big going on, then you bring it to the board, but it, to have, you know, I don't think we should have, okay, here's, Molly's going to do planning, Steve's going to do Rec Authority, you know, at, at all the meetings, so just, just-
Board member's reports.
Commissioners' reports. And-
Yeah, because ours meets every other month, so I mean, you know, it wouldn't be, yeah.
That's a good idea.
Well, it could be trustee reports, I guess.
But I think then it's more, it's more, we all know kind of what's going on in the other tentacles of the township.
Yeah, a little better communication.
Absolutely, better communication.
You know, like, an update on Joint Rec, one thing that we're doing there now that's really kind of cool, and we may want to consider it in our parking lot, is we went completely off the grid with LED lighting, and we got one tower thing with a solar panel on the top that throws off the lighting. Jerry Dobek got involved, and he was super impressed on the downlighting, and it's not real bright, but he read out quite a ways from it. So then I built a portable little concrete box thing that we could move around the Joint So then I built a portable little concrete box thing that we could move around the Joint Rec property and place it and test out different areas. Well, now they have six of them going in, and we put them together, Matt Cowell and I put them together, and they're going in tomorrow. But the cool thing about them is they come on at dark, and they go off at daylight, and they charge every day.
I got one on my porch.
And they are, I'm, I'm impressed on the lighting they throw, and then sometimes we'll go out here after meetings, and it's darker than hell out here. But they're kind of cool, I mean, they weren't really that cheap, but all in all, when you look at paying for them, we put them on concrete pedestals, and there's six of them going in, like I said, and Jerry Dobek was involved in saying, here, 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 and then unfortunately, you got to get with the governing body from the state, what's the name of that agency?
The Historical?
Yeah, it's the Historical Agency, they had to approve them.
Chipo.
Chipo, that's. So, you know, but it's just kind of some neat stuff that they do, kind of cool.
Yeah, I like them, I like the, I got a little solar panel on the roof of my deck, and lights all around the edge, and they come on every night, go off in the morning.
Go off in the morning.
Except they're not working really well lately.
Oh, sun, that's pretty. We need sun.
Northern Michigan is not the best place. Any other business to come before the board? If there are no objections, we will stand adjourned.
Thank you.